Good evening and welcome to the School District of the City of Dearborn. Today is Monday, May 18th. This is a regular scheduled meeting for Dearborn Public Schools. It's a few minutes past 7:00 PM, but I will call this meeting to order. Before we go on, please, I was just told that we're probably near capacity in this room. So if there are any empty seats, please get somebody's attention because there are people standing on the back wall. If we can fill those seats. And Ms. Elzayat, please keep an eye on things. If we have to go to a backup plan, maybe another room for any overflow. Anybody else coming in, please be on top of that. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Dimrojo?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Moses?
Here.
Trustee Petrichkov?
Here.
Trustee Thor?
Here.
Trustee Watts?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Dr. Joshua Tynan, Principal now in Allen Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, President Barry, Superintendent Trustees. We have Maddie Carrington here. We have Chloe Cruz and Adriana Ferga are going to say the pledge. Are you ladies ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great job.
Well done.
Girls, this way.
We just want to say thank you, Chloe. Good job. Thank you very much. Another long applause.
Thank you for having us. These three are really the cream of the crop for us over at Allen. But when you say come and give the pledge, it's really hard to choose because I will say every one of our students is cream of the crop.
Okay.
But these three here are really good example of the stuff that we do. They participated in everything that we have, every club that we have, and they're great greeters and they're just outgoing people. And their teacher actually is here, Mr. Hawkins, who is, if you haven't met him, one of, if not one of the best teachers in the district. And he really does some really progressive things for us. He has a lot of weird ideas on how to educate and so do I. So between the two of us, it works pretty well. He really has embraced the idea of the steam technology and the STEM technology and getting the kids ready for the 21st century. Over at Allen, we're really involved in 3D printing and coding, and he's really taken that, taken that on. And what the students produce is no longer just a sit and get, but now it's a sit, get, and create. And so they show how they're learning it. It's a really, it's a really great thing. Just one small thing that we're proud of at Allen. So thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. Now, next item.
Superintendent Zeppe?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Board members, members of the audience, those on YouTube, TV. We wanted to start with, unfortunately, we had a student from Howe that we learned that just passed away. If we could take a moment of silence to in honor of Evan Campbell, and we did reach out to the family. Thank you. Thoughts and prayers are with his family. So I'm going to go down on the list. I have, first of all, retirements. Marilyn Bossio, over 19 years of experience. Irene Harris, 20 years. Monica Mansour, over 25 years. Kelly Mustin, 26 years. Shannon Peterson, over 29 years. William Powell, over 28 years. And Kim Stanton, over 25 years. If we can thank them for their service and congratulate them on that. And again, they will get written cards from me congratulating them. To the board and everyone, we have the tentative board schedule, which I know the board has seen, and we would go for an official vote in June. We always bring it forward for that, for the 24-25 year, which starts in July. Wanted to mention, and I did send out communication, teacher appreciation. I know we have a lot of teachers here. It was Teacher Appreciation Week last week, and I know the board and I appreciate the hard work and dedication of our teachers. At the Teacher of the Year, which I know we have some teachers coming to get recognized again here from the Chamber of Commerce Awards Ceremony. I mentioned, you know, teachers here in Dearborn being best of the best. I truly appreciate your hard work, dedication that you provide to your students, and truly believe that you are best of the best. And so I thank you, and I know the board does as well. Also want to mention, it's Mental Health Awareness Month, so want to thank all our mental health professionals that support our students, social workers, psychologists, counselors, all our staff that supports, our administrators, everyone. Want to mention kudos to Mike Assaly and his team. Continue to write for and receive grants in the area of mental health, along with Danielle Elzayat for safety. To date, recently, we've received 9.9 million in grants that support mental health, so thank you to Mike and his team. These are monies that come that help, that don't come out of the general fund, they're grant funded, and appreciate that because we know what's very important. I think I had mentioned here too today, our, last time that, you know, the governor had actually called us because of some of the work we're doing with mental health and school safety. So, you know, we should be proud, but we still have a lot of work to do, and we know that's, there's issues out there, so thank you. I put this out yesterday, but I felt like I needed to do it again. I hope everyone had a wonderful Mother's Day yesterday, nice weather, and thank you to all those mothers out there. State budget. Because of my role as President of the Michigan Superintendents, MASA, I have a lot of action that's going on in Lansing, and I'm aware of a lot of things with lobbyists. We are currently working to advocate for staff and students. One of the things that we are asking for in the state budget, and I want to thank Representatives Burns, Farhat, Senators, who's not part of our district, Kamalary, but Senator Santana, Senator Kamalary is Chair of the Education Committee, so a lot of the recommendations come through him. He's in the Down River area. But we appreciate their support, listening to me and others as we advocate for students. One of the things we're trying to do is advocate for less money that districts would have to pay into pension. It wouldn't, it would be replaced by state budget, so it would be a savings for the district. So it would still maintain the pension, but I believe, you know, union leadership and other associations are also on board trying to advocate in that area. A lot of us might remember in 2012 when we had to elect to pay that 3% back during previous administrations. So I continue to advocate in those areas. It would save employees potentially, and it would save the district for our students. Few other projects we're working on, and I want to thank them, along with Congresswoman Talib, we're working hopefully to get some funding for CTE and green schools in the district, so that's a very positive. We'll continue to work there, but we think, you know, we have some ability to hopefully get both federal and state funding. I also formed, I use my role as MASA President, and obviously Dearborn, we have a large ELL, English Language Learner Population, 50%. I created a group that's for ELL advocacy and for sharing knowledge with districts from across the state. I'm pleased to say, again, this is something Senator Kamalary is supporting as well, that we've, we hope that in the state budget, we'll get an increase for English language learners that are underfunded currently. So there's positive there, but we'll continue to work with them and our representatives as well. Wanted to mention on another level, so during the 2021, 2022, Dearborn schools had the largest summer programs in the state. Last year, we did not have the funding because we did not have the federal funding in order to do that. Thankfully, our team put together a proposal, and I want to thank the Ballmer Foundation because now we're looking at, right now, we have about 2,500 students signed up, and I think more to come. So we're looking at another large scale summer program where staff would be compensated well. And again, that's because, thanks Mesa Malibazie, I know Ms. Farage and others took the lead to write for that grant with the Ballmer, and then with the 23G, we're supplementing some of that money that we're getting for students through that funding that Ms. Farage took the lead on. So we know it's very important, and so we're very excited. I also want to mention, I know when we did have those summer programs, the AFT President Randy Weingartner heralded the partnership that we had here between administration and, you know, the teachers working together for these summer programs and other programs. So we appreciate that, you know, that we were heralded on a national level, working together for the collaboration. And to add into that, I want to mention, you know, we pride ourselves on collaboration, and I know Ms. Martin's here, and I want to thank her for the idea of coming up with a teacher advisory committee. I have a student advisory committee, the superintendent, I think it's a great idea. We have Dr. Sweden, who's going to work to hopefully help coordinate this, to get diverse people on this committee where we can have conversation. We'll start, and if it works with the, you know, the DFT teachers, obviously, we value all employees, we'll offer it to the other union groups as well. And I know this would be in addition to our monthly meetings. I can say that I've been in them for about 14 years because it started with Brian Wiston when we would meet with union leadership on a regular basis, monthly, to try to tackle issues and brainstorm and collaborate. And I thank Ms. Martin and her team. For example, one is just the millage. We worked so cohesively to get that passed, you know, we had a 72% margin, so wanted to thank, thank the union for those areas. Also wanted to mention, I just closed out the chatting with the superintendent at Lori School. This is where we go out and we collaborate and listen to parents and staff all over the, you know, the district. Now, I get to go to about nine schools. I've been doing this for eight years. Very positive. We get to see dialogue directly from parents. It's kind of like a town hall, and then we also do it with staff. In order to get to all schools, what we've done is divided it up where an executive director takes the lead. So we're getting to every single school in the district every year. And what we do is we take notes on the feedback that we receive. We bring that to our cabinet meetings and collaborate and look at ideas that are presented from both parents and staff. And then we always have it on our cabinet retreat agenda every summer to do a review since the year closed out. Sometimes we put it on the cabinet during the year because they're pressing issues, but want to thank our team for doing that. And I know the board wanted to see that a few years ago, where we got to every building I had started in about eight or nine. Another thing I wanted to mention is that open enrollment, open enrollment closes on November, May 20th for employees, so make sure you fill that out if you want your insurance. I did mine, the first day, May 6th, that is available. I do not want to forget to do that. So again, that's another area where we collaborate with union. I believe we're the only district in the state where we have what we call the VIBA, where the unions, the four union groups actually have a committee, DSEHP, and they, we actually fund their, the healthcare, but then they make the decisions and choices for all the healthcare. I believe other districts had looked at it, but we're the only ones that have seen success in the state, so want to thank the collaborative nature. I think it's a great model, again, that's working with the, with all the union groups. I have a few other things here. It's graduation season. We had a great graduation on Saturday, and we missed the rain. I know Dr. Green was very happy, Trustee Moses and Trustee Petrichkov. It was, and then the sun came out, and it was warm, and we missed the rain, and then it got very cold and windy, and a lot of the things toppled over, but we got through it, and thankfully, they wanted to do it on the field. So it was a great day on Saturday. It really kicks off. I know for the board, you guys kicked off your graduation at the college a couple of weeks ago, but for the district, that kicks off our season, and we have all the graduations for all of our schools coming up at the beginning of June, and we're very excited. It's a very positive time, along with the Honor Assembly, so we're very excited about those. Also wanted to send out kudos. I know Dr. Patterson is here and Ms. Farage. Every year, they work hard on a, on a survey that's aligned with the U.S. Department of Education, and it's a survey looking at how we perform in the district, and it's, it's done either biannually, and it's done in collaboration with the U.S. Department of Ed or with Cognia to ensure specific validity and reliability in the field. We had over 1,057 staff that participated, 1,765 parents, and the biggest group was students at 6,314 students. So a press release did, or a report did go out in that area. And that's all I have, Mr. President. I had a long list today, but a lot of positive things.
Positive things. Any questions for Dr. Milikow? Trustee Watts?
Dr. Milikow, the, the summer program, can you give for those parents who are watching, if they were interested in it, is it just elementary school? Is it middle school?
Elementary and middle school at this point for that program.
Okay.
And then we have our normal summer programs that we offer at the high school level as well.
Okay, and so for those parents, do they, if they wanted to enroll their child in that program, do they go, where do they find that information?
Where's, my team's one of? Okay, so there's, every school has the enrollment form, so they can submit online, and they can contact their local school. In fact, I did see a communication that went out telling schools enrollment is still open, so parent, I'm, we're assuming that's going to go up, the 2,500. We can get up to $7 million through this Ballmer, which is fantastic.
Is there a deadline?
So that would be, so we end June 7th, so that would be what, June?
17th.
Or 17th.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you for asking those questions for the parents.
Dr. Milikow?
Well, to piggyback on there, I know a lot of times, parents may have plans for the summer months kind of thing, and so are hesitant to enroll in something like this, thinking that they have to be there for the full, what is it, seven weeks, six weeks of the program? Is, is there the ability for parents, do we know, to have their kids miss a certain amount, given that it's a free program?
The grant funding is based on 70%.
Of attendance. Sorry, I knew, it didn't seem like it was working. So the grant funding is based on 70% of attendance, and so on the enrollment form, there's a line that says that I'm going to do, for the parent to sign, that I commit to having my child attend at least 18 out of the 25 days. We get the 70% around June 20th, and then the remaining 30% will depend on the attendance. So the attendance will be taken one time per day. That's what the grant requires, is that we take attendance at one time, one time per day, and that we offer an eight-hour day.
But they don't have to necessarily commit to the full eight-hour day?
No, no, no. The, last 90 minutes is childcare option. We didn't want our teachers to be there later than 2:33 summertime.
I just want to make sure, parents take advantage of something like this, where it's kind of like a summer camp more than just a, and we know summer learning loss is tremendous. We found that out over the years, so.
It's three hours of academics and 90 minutes of language arts and 90 minutes of math, and then we have some really exciting enrichment activities planned. Lemis Ror, Executive Director, is working on the contracts with a couple different enrichment companies, plus all the enrichment activities that our teachers will be providing as well.
So it's a way to get your kids out during the day, involved.
Off technology.
Yeah. And socializing with, with other students and yet not committing to, if, if you have a week's vacation, you need to go on.
We still want you to enroll. We still want you to enroll. I just had that conversation with a very close friend of mine. I said, hey, even if you can't get your kids there at 8 o'clock, we still want them to come 9 o'clock. It's okay too. So yes, enroll even if you can't make all the days. It's still, it's still going to benefit your child, and it's a three-year grant, so we should have this for the next two years if we do things right this year. But we're following the rules, so it should be good.
Trustee Watts?
Okay, so then I, thank you for saying that's three years. So with that, are we going to be able to collect data as to what the programs we're, number one, providing? So is, with the Ballmer Group, is it a summer camp? Is it STEM? Is there any metrics that we have to follow? Is it supposed to be literacy?
It's, there is actually a pre and post-assessment that all the students will take, and that pre and post-assessment is provided by the Ballmer Group.
Okay, so then with that as well, then would we have potential three years of seeing the data of saying, this is where the start, the students started, and this is where they ended, and then we can see potentially then what is the comparison for literacy, math, et cetera?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So the, the Ballmer Group partners with United Way. So it's actually, we apply to Ballmer Group, and then Ballmer Group works with United Way. United Way has to approve everything we submitted to the Ballmer Group, but they're very easy to work with, and they really, they really want as many kids as possible to join.
Trustee McDonald?
Just for clarification, you said it starts the 17th, was it?
No, that's when we're probably going to stop the enrolling.
Oh, okay.
Because that's after, it starts, the professional development for teachers is June 10th and 11th. The program first day is June 12th, and it goes through July 24th. It's 25 school days.
So one other thing that I had heard from the teachers a couple of years ago is that with this, are they able to split the summers? Say, for instance, they wanted to work some of the summer, but not necessarily the whole summers, they can actually feel like they've had a break?
So, so we did allow that. We promoted that for the eight-week program. That was the first year post, for summer, post-COVID. This is a five-week program, 25 days. The letter of agreement said that if we did not have enough teachers interested in working the full five weeks, then we would consider allowing them to split. So we are not, we have, so blessed, we had way an outrageous amount of interest in the, in teaching, and I'm already thinking like, how are we going to rotate for next year to make sure people who had the opportunity this year, other people have? Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how we'll do that, but we'll get there. So no, to answer the question, they're not splitting.
I just want to mention one thing I'm proud of our team, and I know the board supports. So for example, I was in a meeting with several other districts that I won't name, and everyone was kind of like saying why they couldn't do it, why they couldn't do this. I'm looking at it with the Ballmer Group. There's this money that we can get for our students. We keep back to our team, we'll do the work, we'll get the grants because it'll benefit our kids. And again, we had that model during the pandemic. I think everyone was looking, last year, why didn't we have? Well, we didn't have the funding. The Ballmer is now, they also support us with CIS funding as well for community and service, so it's really positive. And there's a lot of work our team does with these grants across the board. It's a lot of work, but it benefits the students, and then it saves our general fund as well so that we can have these, you know, contracts that compensate our staff well. I would also like to mention, it is a benefit to the employee, and I know this because a lot of employees, it's going to, that work the summer program, and we compensated the highest in the state, it will, it'll raise their average final compensation for their retirement. So it's a benefit, it's a win-win, and then our students are benefiting, so.
Anybody else? Dr. Milikow, you mentioned graduation ceremonies, commencements, we've got honors night coming events. I know a couple of us have spoken to you about this, but I want to say publicly, let's keep an eye on, it's going to be an election year this year, let's keep an eye on candidates invited to the podium, or just, somebody's going to invite somebody, check with you, because we found it, found it kind of awkward, we're going to address that that night.
So normally what we do, we tell them, is we don't allow candidates, but if there's a sitting elective official, then they're allowed.
That's different.
But, but candidates know we have not allowed that.
We had an issue a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for reminding me.
Next item, please.
Next item, recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Commendations to bus driver Tamika Young, who will receive a 2024 Wayne County Excellence in Transportation Award. Ms. Young was nominated by her peers and praised for her hardworking dedication and her bright disposition. Commendations to the 16 Etzel Ford High School students who attended the German Day Competition at the University of Michigan on April 12th. Students took home 11 awards from the 20 different events after competing against hundreds of other Michigan high school students. As a group, Etzel students again took first place in German for All for their community outreach, which involved baking different German pastries and sharing them with the residents of the Beaumont Commons Retirement Community. Harris Steven Sidore is Etzel's German teacher. Commendations to members of the Etzel Ford High School Quiz Bowl Team, which competed in the state Class A Quiz Bowl Championship in Ann Arbor on April 13th. Junior Felix Wilson Schwartz earned first-team All-State Honors, finishing fifth overall. The team finished 15th overall at the state tournament, in addition to winning the Division Championship and Playoff Championships for the Southern Wayne Quiz Bowl Conference. Commendations to Jennifer Pagowski, who is named the 2024 Educator of the Year in the Mayor's Arts Awards. Ms. Pagowski is the Vocal Music Director at Dearborn High School. She was recognized during the Mayor's Arts Awards on April 30th. Commendations to district high school students who assisted with the Rotary Club of Dearborn's Telegraph Cleanup Project on April 19th. Dearborn Public Schools students participating included Kamora Hannah from Virtual K-12, Thomas Besic, Maria and Miriam Awad from Dearborn High, and Ayesha and Sajjo Hubayashi from Fortson High.
My name is Ahmar Al-Ghrawi of Etzel Ford High School. Commendations to Luane Amari, a senior at Etzel Ford High School and the Dearborn Center for Math, Science, and Technology. Amari was recently named one of 400 recipients for an Amazon Future Engineer Scholarship. She will receive a $40,000 scholarship towards a degree in computer science or engineering and a paid internship at Amazon. Commendations to Dearborn High Senior Thomas Besic. He has been named one of 625 semifinalists for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. Created in 1964, the program recognizes graduating seniors for their accomplishments in academics, leadership, community arts, and career and technical fields. Commendations to the Dearborn High School Vocal Ensemble for earning a First Division rating at the Michigan School Vocal Music Association State Choral Festival. This is the third year in a row the group has scored a First Division rating at the State Choral Festival. Commendations to students on Dearborn High School's Pioneer Press for the success in the Michigan Interscolactic Press Association Spring Award Contest. Students took home first, five first-place awards, seven second-place awards, and 12 honorable mentions. First-place winners include Mohammed Al-Ali, Alyssa Osara, Minar Alt-Sarof, Hadiel Antar, and Hassan Turini. Second-place awards were given to Angela Shehayid, Hussein Hamud, Mohammed Al-Ali, Alyssa Osara, Simona Huraya, Maris Akhenrick, and Wilson Niyang. Commendations to the schools who came together across feeder tracks to provide the annual evening of jazz concert on May 1st. Participating school jazz bands included St. Middle School, Bryan Middle School, Etzel Ford High School, and Dearborn High School. Commendations to students from Etzel Ford and Dearborn High School for their successful musical productions in April. Etzel Ford presented You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, and Dearborn High performed Disney's Beauty and the Beast. Commendations to the Etzel Ford students who built their own vehicle and competed in the Square One Education Network's Full-Skill Innovative Vehicle Design Competition. The automotive and welding student assembled the car, which took first place in the overall competition. Student Amir Al-Khatib also walked away with a $500 scholarship. Student Jeremy Paddock served as the team's crew chief. The team is led by auto teacher Marissa Reyno.
Commendations to stout principal Habah Adalbaki, who was recently named a Champion of Equity School Leadership winner by the American Consortium for Equity and Education. The group praised Mrs. Adalbaki for her leadership in providing professional development and high expectations for teachers working with disadvantaged youth and in her strong outreach to encourage STEM experiences for stout students.
Commendations to Order of Principal Nicole Lirabak, who was recently honored with a proclamation from Stair Up Al-Abes Farhat, recognizing her years of dedication and commitment to the students.
Thank you very much. Good job. I have one to add. The last time I sat in this seat back in 2020, I think it was just two meetings before the world shut down. When I dressed our graduates through a video, I told them I was looking for amazing things out of them, all the challenges they went through, and they didn't prove me wrong. We've been hearing a lot of good news, somewhere our graduates going to med school, business school, and we just had, I think it was a week ago, I heard some real good news. Jake Tofalsky committed to playing football at Notre Dame. He was a Central Michigan. He's eligible for two more years. More important, he's going to be pursuing his master's degree there. So Jake, we love you and we're very proud of you. Dearborn High School graduate of 2020. Thank you. Next item.
Before we continue, can we ask our students what they're going to do next? Because I know one of them's a senior.
Yes.
And also.
Back in the spotlight.
Only.
She didn't introduce herself.
Yeah, she didn't introduce herself, so can you let us know who you are?
My name is Margaret Carskad, and I'm also a senior at Etzel Ford.
Okay.
You knew I was going to call on you because your mom would make me, she'd text me like, why didn't you ask her? So what are you going to do after senior year?
This fall, I'm going to be going to Wayne State, majoring in psychology and I'm minoring in Spanish.
Okay, thank you.
So again, my name's Ahmar Al-Ghrawi. I'm a senior who was a captain in football. I'm going to be pursuing into the field of anesthesiology. I'm going to be playing football at Wayne State on the side as well, and hopefully I'll be starting with my bachelor's degree in nursing.
Best wishes to you. Thank you for catching that.
Yes, next. Next Teacher of the Year.
We have Ms. Farage coming up.
I want to congratulate all teachers who were nominated for the Teacher of the Year. Alberta Murrayhead Teacher of the Year Student Choice Awards. We know that all of our teachers are winners. Congratulations to those who were nominated and to the finalists. I'm going to go ahead and announce their names. Pre-K through 2 award went to Jory Watts from Gear Park Elementary. Grade 3 to 5 Angela Zaghar from River Oaks Elementary. The middle school was Maria McCarthy at Lori and high school was Angelo Aquino from Berry Career Center. Also adult ed was Elizabeth Wolladian.
If any of them are here and would like to come up, we'd welcome that too. If not, it's okay. Okay.
Thank you.
There is one.
Thanks.
Come on up.
It's strange, I'm facing this way, but everybody's that way, so give me a second. When I, I'm coming up here because, oh, we have another one.
Yes.
No? Okay. I didn't see anybody else standing up, so I figured I should. When they first brought me on stage, they asked me if I wanted to talk in front of the podium in front of everybody and I, I said best not because I want to keep this award and I just got up here. But, you know, I figured, I wanted to talk about the fact that as I have been teaching for 14 years, it is hard, you know, every day. And according to the, the email I got that said, if you want to talk about what it feels like to achieve this, I'm going to go off the cuff and say, yeah, it was, it's hard to be a teacher. And every time I turn around, it's like thinking about how I'd rather spend the time just sharing with the class, whether or not that's just my favorite movies and comic books and that's what I really have that I enjoy the most out of teaching. And being in that classroom, whether or not it's a kid that comes up and asks if they can have my lunch because they're hungry and I just give it to them, or if it's just me talking about movies with them, that's the best part about it. It's not so much what they get in grade. I want them to do well, but I'd rather watch them learn and if that means fail and they reassess and they reapply and they rework and they make it better, that's what we do as teachers every day. We fail and we figure out what do we do to make it better the next time, where you readjust and do better. So just achieving, getting a call-up from a student was, was a great honor. I never thought it would ever happen, so it was, it was awesome to get it.
Thank you for sharing that. Trustee Watts?
Hold on, before you leave, hold on.
Sir, come back.
Can you remind, can you remind us what grade do you teach and what school?
I teach high school at Michael Berry Career Center. So I am teaching, you know, 10th, 11th, 12th graders for graphic design, digital multimedia and art, but it's mostly just the engineering process of the creative design, graphic design, communications.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll do it too. I didn't speak at the award ceremony either. It's overwhelming, it's a great feeling and it's even more special that it came from nominations from the students, reading what they wrote and, and asking my class who wrote it. They were just like, I wrote this and I wrote this and just hearing what they wrote about me, even though it wasn't the winning essay, just made me feel so much more appreciated and loved and like, I was truly making a difference because as educators, we feel like we're failing all the time, kind of like what Angelo said, that it's just, it's very difficult to feel like you're successful as a teacher because there's so many things every day that go wrong and it's hard to look for the positives. And this was just a reminder that we do make a difference and even though it's not recognized for everyone, we do make the difference that we hope that we would. So, thank you. Can you remind us, were you teaching your? Yeah, River Oaks and grade 3, 3rd grade. Yeah.
Thank you and you do make a difference.
I'm Maria McCarthy, I teach 6th grade math at Lori. Just wanted to say it was an honor. I have the best kids and the best team, so thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
I did not plan to say anything today, but my name is Jory Watts. I'm 2nd grade teacher at Gear Park and I just want to say thank you to the students that wrote all those wonderful messages and their essays about me. It was a shocker and I feel very blessed and I want to say thank you to my mom and my dad, who are both educators and thank you, Ms. Siror, because she believed in me and she hired me at Gear Park. So thank you.
Congratulations to all the winners and all the.
We've got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm for adult education. Hi, everybody. Sorry, I'm turning my back to you.
It's okay.
So, yes, I was awarded the Alberta Murrayhead Award, student nominated, and I'm proud of that part, which says student nominated. It's better than, well, I feel it's better than somebody up there selecting me or, or taking a tweezer and pulling me out, you know? I feel happy it was the students, I really do. This is the first point. The second point is I'm humbled by this award. I'm very, very humbled and it's a big responsibility that from now on I have to, if somebody tells me, oh, you're a celebrity now, I said, no, I'm not a celebrity. I was humbled by the award. That's the second point. So we in adult education, I like to teach adult education for several reasons. One of them is that I feel that no family should be left behind. Remember the no child? No family. When I'm teaching the mothers, I know they are working for the next generation at home and they are educating their kids and reading with their kids. It all, I feel proud when one of the mothers, for example, tells me, I used to take someone with me to the doctor to interpret. Now I take my neighbors and I can drive now. I take them to the doctor's office and I interpret for others. So that feels good. One more thing, the, the students are there because they want to be there. Nobody is forcing them to come. They are not children and they're eager to learn, so that makes it an honor and a privilege to be able to teach them. Finally, I wish, I wish that you would, I will probably work as much as I can, as long as I can, but then I'm exiting, right? And whatever I say here, I say it for the other teachers of adult education. So I feel, I don't know if it is universal, that we are sort of undervalued, underappreciated. It was only recently that EO got us into this award, okay, to be nominated to this award. They have a big federation of teachers. We have a thick mini DFT, like poop on the side. Yeah, and I feel that is not very just. Finally, I thank you, all of you, one by one, and I thank Mr. Berry who is sitting there. One time I was shopping in one of his establishments and I told Mr. Berry, I'm just coming from school, I have no cash, no credit cards, I forgot my wallet at home. I'd like, I have shopped, I'd like to take everything home and, and I'll send you a check later. And I told him, look, I'm a teacher here, and he said, go ahead. So I acknowledge that, I thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Trustee Watts, my president.
Trustee McDonald, go ahead.
I just want to say, one of my favorite graduations to go to and go over here is adult education because as was mentioned, they learn so much, it changes their lives and it makes them so proud of their accomplishments. So I just have to say that it's a magnificent program and the students that graduate from there are amazing.
Great, thank you for sharing. Next item, please.
Next item, acknowledgement of donations.
I just want to thank Jory. We're the lucky ones, Jory. Congratulations. Okay, a donation of $200 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with Michigan State University to be used for the maple drummers. A donation of $2,975.65 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation and various donors to be used for the Salina Green Schoolyards. A donation of $10,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with Mike Masalem Productions LLC to be used for the Dearborn High Theater. A donation of 100 pairs of top brand name shoes has been offered to Stout Middle School by Ali Sayed to be given to students at Stout for their ed celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. You did all the donors too. Next item, please.
Next item, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Building and Site Committee meeting, April 11th, 2024, Board Report 23-118. Policy Committee meeting, April 11th, 2024, Board Report 23-119. Regular P-12 meeting, April 11th, 2024, Board Report 23-120. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move.
Support.
So we have a motion moved by trustee Ambrosio, supported by trustee Pachakov. Are there any corrections or?
You can give, you can give it to.
He's okay, he'll be fine. Are there any corrections or amendments to the motion? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative, please.